Okay. Hello, good evening. It is 6:00 PM on September 26th. This is the Monday regular board meeting for Monroe School District. Present are all five directors, Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Johnson, and Director Campbell and myself. We have acting or interim superintendent Dr. Marcie Larson, executive staff and members of our staff as well as members of the community, as well as student director Nathan. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the board doc, board docs website, excuse me. Will you please all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, her staff, or through outside research. Okay, moving on to agenda item 1.0, or sorry, 1.04, review of the agenda. We have two late adds, 7.01 accounts payable vouchers and 7.03 payroll. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
I move that we approve the general, the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to prove the, approve the agenda as modified. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to 2.01, student representatives. Our student director Nathan Burrell will present reports highlighting student activities throughout the district. Go ahead, Nathan.
All right, it's a pleasure to be here. For events in the district, I mean, I can't speak too much on the subject of elementary school or middle school students this week. As my knowledge on them is currently limited, but as for some high school highlights, some key occurrences have been around homeroom. Homeroom, for some background, is the new time right after first period, where we have 30 minutes to learn, have enrichment activities, study, whatever we need to do. Now, for the past couple of weeks, we've just been going over the basics of safety, different expectations that we have at the school, and safety guidelines, et cetera. But today, they introduced Flexi Sked, sketch, yeah, something like that. It's a cool app where we get to schedule classes, that schedule sessions with different teachers during that homeroom time period. So it gives us a lot more freedom to go about where we go and get some work done in a focused environment. So I'm really looking forward to that. As for the school in general, an optimistic vibe still continues, like we discussed last week, two weeks ago. Still going, working hard, and I'm optimistic about this school year, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan. Directors, any questions, comments? Well, I went to Friday's game, and I had a really cool moment because in my head, I said, I know that guy. I saw you down there playing in the band. That was really neat. And I wanted to run down, but that would have been inappropriate, I think, too.
Probably.
But I saw you. You're famous, Nathan.
Thank you.
Any questions? No. Okay, moving on to agenda item 3.01, we have audience comments and/or public comments now. Okay, let me go ahead and read this then. We welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes, and concerns. Forms are available in the back of the room to sign up to speak and outlines the school board's process to do so. While the form outlines our procedure to audience comments, I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, if several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to their representative. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please see any staff member here in the room, and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during these speakers' comments their words begin to approach a personnel concern, I will remind the speaker once to keep comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes, and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff-related comments, I will give 30 seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, any staff member in the room can help with how to move forward with the complaint about personnel. And we have one speaker tonight. And, yes. Okay, so I'll have you state your name and your relationship to the school district. And it looks like you're here on behalf of a group.
Yes, thank you. The same group that I spoke on behalf of from two weeks ago when I was here. My name is Beth Nybert. I'm an active member of this community, have been since 1992. Second generation is enrolled in this school. The first two both graduated from Monroe High School. The first, the youngest, attended all 12 years less kindergarten from this school. So I've been participatory in this district for a long time, seen a lot of changes. And I hadn't planned to speak tonight, except that I got an email in response to the last week when I spoke from Dr. Larson. And I was a bit concerned because while it was addressed to me and asked that I forwarded on to the members that I represented last week, it was put together by her director of communications under her direction. But this email, my subject was addressed to this body, this board. And some of the challenges that we've had in the past as a district is the fact that the superintendent has shared information or made decisions without the knowledge of the board. So I'm bringing this response to you and making you aware, as well as the members in the audience that are watching via Zoom that were also hearing my presentation. I spoke out against the, what I believe to be inappropriate use of $100,000 or and more concerning courageous conversations training, which is a system of racism, being pressed upon a people who are not generally racist. While we are imperfect people, I believe generally we are not a racist community. And so she responds, I'll cut to the chase, we hear your concerns. Thank you very much for hearing my concerns concerning courageous conversations training, and we want to assure you that it's not adopted curriculum that will be taught in classrooms. I understood that. It is a philosophy that the teachers, over 330 staff members, certificated staff, and the dress district office employees were required to train in an effort to fulfill legislation that has been pressed by our government. Thank you for the link. I was already familiar with that. The engrossed Senate substitute bill 5044, which was available and has been available through the legislation of Washington's website. It talks about cultural competency, diversity, equity, and inclusion to help them better understand culturally responsive practices in the classroom that will promote equitable outcomes for all students. And I made a comment before about how it's as though we are requiring that we hand out participation. You get your butt in the seat, and we want you to move forward, and everybody has equitable results. And I printed out the legislation because there's so many different ways to interpret it. I'm curious. I'm really curious. When I look around this room and I see every single person sitting in this room, and I would wonder, that is a curriculum that immediately, because part of this is building unity, is a systematic racism subject that is being taught to the teachers in which to have conversations with children and of all ages from K through 12, that sets them apart from each other based on the tone of their, of their skin that has nothing to do with anything that they have control of? When I read this quote from Dr. Martin Luther King, and he says, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation, will then will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of the character." Do you suppose he imagined that he was only talking about identical skin-colored children as his own? I don't think so. I think he wanted every person to be valued, not by their outward appearance, but by their inward character, by what they portray. Now, Dr. Larson, I understand that you're a new interim supervisor, and I'm not sure what they did where you used to be, and so I'm kind of, I'm holding you faultless. But it is this board's responsibility to respond to the individuals, not, not yours, not yours. It is this board's responsibility to answer my concerns. My concerns had to do with why the $100,000 that was being spent for the curriculum, not including the, the, the subject of the fees associated with the staff that attended, when we had a failed levy, and while the government is dishing out money, let's see the reports. When we do this kind of training program, where is the reports? Back to these individuals, back to the individuals watching this Zoom about what it costs, where all the money came from, how it was used out of the budget, that's being fiscally responsible. Now, when I look, it's just so interesting that Today's Mail brought out this so beautiful report from the Monroe School District that cites the demographics. And so we are primarily in Monroe School District. And by the way, I went into the population review and discovered that similar numbers were used about the whole demographics of our community. We are a majority of fair-skinned, white individuals. So we have 64.4, according to your numbers, 73.6% of the population are automatically racist because of what, how they were born, automatically. That's what courageous conversations is founded on. It's saying also that working hard and wanting to do, be number one, being hard. Director Bumpus, your husband is an athlete. He played for the Seahawks, am I correct? I bet if you put that same demographics and that same criteria, he's automatically racist because he wants to do those things. There's so many other things. By having a moral family structure that is known as a parent, both parents in the home with children, this is a healthy family, not a racist system because we happen to believe that it is healthier. Statistically, it's healthier to have an intact family. But yet, your training says, well, youngster, you come from a family where both your parents live there? Well, there's something wrong with your family because it doesn't meet the criteria associated with this direction. And I understand that it is a philosophy that a teacher can choose to use or not to use. But my concern is that this school board is making decisions that is not fair for all. It is not a foundation against intolerance and racism, but it is pigeoning individuals into a specific criteria. Director Johnson, feel free to roll your eyes at me. I know you never agree with me, but I'm sorry I'm here to speak because I represent the majority of your demographics. And they might not be present here tonight because it takes a lot of time and energy to come in and speak well and to present information and to look up laws and come in here with based facts and impression instead of just emotional. I wish the board would have done that kind of investigation before they were pressured into a single focus because there's other ways to meet this law, other ways in order to fulfill this criteria. I thank you for your time and attention. I'm so disappointed, disappointed. Have a great night.
Thank you, Beth. And it looks like I have another public comment. All right, can I have you state, hi, can I have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
So my name is Heather Young, and I am the very proud parent of two kids in special education in the Monroe School District. I wanted to start off tonight to say thank you to the board. I am one of the people who was very, I was pursuing action from the board last year, seeking change from the board last year. And while I don't necessarily agree with every decision, I do see that you're making good strides, and I just wanted to say thank you personally. I understand that tonight, there will be an update from our special education team, and by and large, I think that they do a phenomenal job. The issue that I would ask you to pay special attention to and maybe probe on a bit is the issue of safety. It's the same issue that I've raised consistently over the last several years. And while I think that there was some progress begun, I think that the work has gone dark as it pertains to updates to parents, and it's certainly going far too slow because this is a safety issue. So if you're not familiar with what I'm talking about, for refresher, the, the director of safety was providing training to special education teachers, instructing them to leave the children with disabilities behind in the case of an emergency, and to allow the firemen to go find them. That's not acceptable. We need to make sure that we not only have plans for the safe evacuation of all students and staff, but that those are practiced. The drills shouldn't just be leave the kids behind. So I know that the team had been working on updates. There were some initial meetings for ideas and feedback, but then we haven't heard anything. So it's the beginning of the school year. I'm looking forward to hearing more and seeing important progress made on this topic. So thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, we have next on the agenda 4.01, Special Education Department Report. Yes, okay, yep, David. David, you can't look at me like that because then I get confused. Then we're both. Okay, so we have David Perator, Chief Student Services Officer, and Joy Castillo, Special Education Coordinator, will present a report on special education.
And thank you for having us tonight, and Joy and I put together a presentation and wanted to, gonna start off by just talking a little bit about our current numbers as far as staffing and, and kind of where our students are at and kind of our, kind of how they're dispersed across the, the school district. And then Joy will have some, some important updates around some of the things that we started last year and things that we kind of come to, we're just about at conclusion now. And then we'll just finish up with a little bit of our focus on looking into the remainder of this year and then moving into next year. And with a lot of this, we're, when we're presenting information, we're also taking on some of the, the district commitment to that PLC process and trying not to just talk about things, but also have some data to back up where we're at. And then that allows you to hold us accountable next year in September. If you see some of these same numbers, then that shows we need to be pushing harder. So, but thank you for having given, letting us be here tonight. And so, so the, so a lot of the work for special education really is firmly embedded with the, the, the three commitments for, for Monroe School District, really with the equitable access and the high expectation. A large part of that is where the work that we focus on, building out those inclusive practice, practices, give us, give our students, all of our students, the opportunity to be educated with their general education peers as, as much as possible. And with that, we know all of our students can learn regardless if they have disabilities. And so by having those high expectations, teaching them, giving them access to their general education curriculum, they raise rise to those high expectations. So a little just real briefly about who is serving our students in the district. So we have 35 certificated teachers, and that ranges from our developmental preschool teachers who, who teach our three, three and four-year-olds, our, our school age staff, which includes our resource teachers as well as some of our more self-contained support staff. And then also our, we also have our transitions program, which is, serves our 18 to 21-year-old students. We have six school psychologists, 11 speech pathologists, five occupational therapists, three physical therapists. We have one teacher of the visually impaired. As you can see, a large part of our workforce is our peer educators. Workforce that is supporting our students on IAPs, and that's as, especially as we kind of go into this season of prioritizing where, where we fund our money. That shows a commitment on the part of the district to really support our students with, with special needs. And then we have two one-on-one nurses who support a couple of our more medically fragile students. From the central office staff, we're, we're pretty lean, but we're, we like to think that we're highly effective. So we have two office support folks, that's Heidi Dalton and Kathy Abletz, who kind of are our customer service facing support from the, from the central office, as well as running reports, running our data, helping us with our purchase orders, helping with scheduling of meetings. We have one board certified behavior analyst or BCBA, who's, that's shown a, a commitment from the board as, as well as the district as far as supporting our, our teachers with students around behavioral supports for, for our students. And that's been real successful in the last eight years. We've had that. And it's, and it's really, it's starting to show, take effect within our schools. We have one special education teacher on special assignment who supports our, our, our new teachers as well as does ongoing program support. We have our special education coordinator, that, that is Joy. And this is Joy's second year in the district. And she comes to us with a wide range of knowledge and experience from Edmunds School District. And so she's worked really closely with our teams and has led some of the work around building out our safety plans for, for our students. And then myself, who's kind of, this year, I've been glad I'm able to do more special education again, and I'm not constantly doing COVID support. So this allows us to, to put our focus more onto the things that are important for our students. Our special ed enrollment, you can see I put our last four years of student enrollment for, for our students for September count. And you could see in 2019, we were at our high point. And then the two years of COVID, the numbers reduced some, somewhat. And then we're back up to almost where we started before the COVID shutdown. I think one thing I'd like to highlight is although those numbers went down for September 2020 and September 2021, it wasn't so much our students who, who are served with IAPs leaving the district. It's that natural cycle of a school year where every year, as our, as our graduating class of seniors go out, we, we lose, we lose students just naturally because they're graduating. That's what we do in schools. But then through that, through the year, the process, that your process work, school teams are constantly referring students, we're identifying new students and, and identifying new students who, who might have some different, difference learning needs. During those two years of COVID, when we did not have students as readily in our buildings, those referrals went, went down. And, and so then our actual special education numbers reduced. Last year, we were back to being full-time in school. Our teams were getting the processes going again, and, and, and we're get, we're back up to where our students have more typically been supported in our, in our district. This is just a real quick distribution of where our students are located. So we have 47 students in preschool, 335 across our five elementary schools, 174 that are served in our middle schools, and then 255 that are supported through our high school and transition program. And so that ranges for students for, from ages three through 21. And last year, when Director Wiltfeld and I did some program visits, he had an opportunity to see students from that whole spectrum of ages from ages three all the way up through 21. So we have some really robust programs all along the way for all ages of our students. This is just kind of how our, the disability categories break out for our, our students. There's 13 federal special education categories. And you can see that the majority, the highest percentage of our students are students that are identified as having specific learning disabilities, as well as communication disorders. And I just highlight that just a little bit. Those students are really the students that are, have benefited the, the, the most immediately with our inclusive practices, because those students, the majority of those students are now having their services within general education classrooms. We've been building out those inclusive practices for all of our, our students. And when we look at inclusive practices, we do that regardless of their disability category. We look at where they can be most successful in that, in those general education classrooms. And so we started with some good success around our resource programs. In the last several years, we're, we're also building out those inclusive practices for our programs that used to be more traditionally self-contained, such as our structured learning-centered programs and our, our behavior programs. Those students no longer are, are no longer 100% in their special education classrooms. We have all of our students are benefiting in our, in our general education classes now. That scenario that we still need to be building on is going to be a continued focus to make sure all of our students and all of our programs are having those opportunities. This slide here is a, and I shared this whole slide with our special education team when we were in our summer meeting. But if you focus on the, the top two lines there, that is a, a point of pride for our district. This is looking at where our students are served. And so LRE stands for least restrictive environment, and And in that eighty to a hundred percent category, that's where students who have an IP, they're being served within general education classrooms eighty to a hundred percent of the time. And the state average for, for this is sixty percent. And our district averages, we are up at sixty-nine percent for those students receiving the supports in, in general education classrooms. You could also see in that LRE third category, that is the category where students are, if they are only in a special education classroom, those, that's where those students would be represented. And our number there is less than the state average. And that's a point of pride also because that means that those students aren't just being delegated to a single classroom. They're getting those opportunities with their general education peers. Just briefly with our safety net, safety net is a funding source that are, we're able to recoup funds for our students that are more, the programming options are more costly. So for students that might have a one-on-one parent educator or a, or students who might be served in out-of-district programs that are high-cost programs, we're able to submit to the state and get reimbursement for additional funds back. This isn't a funding source, this is a way of getting some of those monies that we've already spent. So we started, when I first came into the district, the district had stopped billing for safety net for, for a few years. We started implementing that again in 2017, and we've been increasing that award each year, really claiming more and more of that money back to try to backfill some of that money that special education. We spend a lot more on special education than we receive, and this is one way that we're able to receive monies back. You can see the one year that we dipped was the 2020, 21 school year. And that was the year where we were mostly on the hybrid schedule. So we could only bill for services that are actually being delivered. And so for some of our students, if they were not in classes full-time, so even if they had a one-on-one parent educator for six hours a day, if they were not in class for six hours a day, we weren't able to claim those monies. But we were able to return in the last year, and, and we're able to get eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And some of that's also a credit to our, our special education staff to receive the funding for our, for students on safety net. Your, your, your developed IP needs to be a compliant IP, it needs to be properly formulated. And because our staff has been building in those, in those skills and, and some of those compliance things, I'm able to submit those, those, those files to the state with confidence, knowing that that they will be fully funded. And we've been very successful the last several years doing that. Allowed Joy to give a couple of exciting updates and new things that are going on in special education.
Thank you, David, for giving me the more fun slides. You can go ahead and click it. The first thing is recovery services. Just a reminder, those were services offered to students that may have missed out on progress made during the school closure. So Monroe's pretty, pretty ahead of the game. We had the two summer programs that went really well, offering recovery services. In addition to some things throughout the school year, after-school tutoring, that, all that with coming back to school earlier than many districts, we're wrapping up some of our recovery services. Many of them, most of them, but we'll still continue to monitor for those students who, who may need to access. So that was good. And you can do the next one as well. So this year, so last year we had two teachers for transition, just because of the student population and the numbers. But we decided to go down to one program with one program director who's kind of an expert at all the transition stuff, which is pretty complex. And then use those, the resources, the FTE, to open another class at Salem Woods. So now our SLC classes can stay at just a good staff-to-student ratio across the board. Development preschool moved to Frylands, they're happy there. They were happy at Frank Wagner, too, that they, they moved there. And the next one is pretty exciting. Our SLC is doing more officially this year, a curriculum pilot, which is directly relates to their core curriculum in all subjects. So science, history, those that often get missed, along with the math and the writing and the reading. So we'll be piloting that this year and supporting our teachers in that. Student Services Nest, and we can call it something else, you know, some of us don't like the name. There, we, but a need that we noticed last year is we had a lot of communication to our staff and our staff members. I mean, they're, they're busy. So we wanted to look at efficiency. So they don't have to go back and look at what was that Google Doc that Joy sent me or David sent me? Or where was that email where I got that guidance on that? So now we have it all in one spot. So they can just go to this Google site and click on, you know, drop-down menu, and all our communication is there. And it will always be there, and we'll continue to update it. So hopefully that'll help with efficiency. And this one is exciting. The Emergency Management Plan Special Needs Annex, which is more in the next slide. So what we heard last year, that our community identified a need for a more formal way to document what we're doing with students with special needs or additional needs in the event of an emergency. I think it was spoken here, and Heather, you mentioned it today. And so that was a priority for us all last year. And we were, we reached out actually to a bunch of regional directors, other people throughout Washington State, other school districts, and found that we're at the forefront of creating this annex. There are a couple districts in other states that had some models. So it was a fun project to work on and a much-needed one, and, and clearly needed in more places than Monroe. So we partnered with Greg Burns, Director of Safety and Risk Management, and then had several feedback sessions from community family members, teachers, parent educators, specialists, and community, community members from the Arkus, Snohomish County. And they were, and then we had a document shared with them, so they were able to get comments in real time. So it is done, it is finished. We're just waiting for, I guess, Greg to have it officially adopted and added to the annex, and then we'll roll it out to our teachers. I just wanted to say, three main components of it. It has guidance and support for the building teams as they're building out their plans to support all students. Just, you know, kind of just guidance in each category for them to think through and not miss certain things that might be important for certain people's needs. And then a checklist for building administrators, very detailed checklist, so they can keep track of the things that they need to do. I mean, maybe a student needs oxygen, right? Have enough oxygen on hand to, do, you know, do we have the rights? Do our students who don't speak English have a way to understand and practice a drill? To what do we do for students who already have experienced trauma? How do we work with them after a real emergency or even in planning for, for one? And then the part that was my favorite part to do is the tier-three template. So those students that have additional needs during a drill, it's, it's a document that teams can think through and document officially what they are going to do for that individual student, both in teaching the drill or what to do during a drill. Might be something different that you do to support a student during evacuation versus shelter in place. So those templates are there. And, and I'm excited because it is, it is, it's finished and ready to go. So.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is when Joy and I were meeting with some school teams, what we found out was they were doing a lot of these, having these conversations just within their school teams and within their building teams, within their program teams. But there wasn't that formalized process. And that was one of the things, and it was, we, there was an identified need. But to Heather's point, it, it was take, it wasn't moving along. And so I'd just like to add, you know, one of the things that, you know, we take to heart is when we have public comments, we have, you know, we, that gives us feedback as far as what is the priorities in the community. And so we really did, we, we lit a fire under this, this process to, to get it going. And, and like Joy said, we are just, we're just, it is, it is all in there and just needs to be locked and ready to, ready to go. And then we will building out, be building out, getting that training out to our building principals as well as our, our staff. Oh, yeah, and we.
Yeah, yeah. We also made sure that every student had the ability to go to a second floor if they had a mobility need. And so now all buildings with second floors have an evac chair and an evac mat. And there's a staff training, and then our physical therapist, we built in some time for her to go and directly train staff and student, and the students, so they can practice it as well if they're able on using a vac chair or the back, the back mat.
Yeah, so it was, it was a real need, it was an identified need, and that's, we've moved towards getting that. It is, it's gonna be another area of excellence for our district.
David, can I ask a question? So I just, I just want to clarify. So this is a safety procedure for special ed specifically. And it sounds like we have the information, and it will be rolling out soon?
Yes, yes. And I just, I reached out to Greg Burns on Friday just to say, hey, we're ready to finalize it. And where this will live, it will be, it's a standalone chapter within the Monroe School District Emergency Operating Procedures. And so it's a separate section, and then it'll be available for all to see. That's called the Emergency Management Special Needs Annex. And so that has, because what it does is it looks at, for each, you can't have a specific, you know, every, every, every plan, every scenario written down. But it gives the process and the protocol for building teams to look at as they're planning their, their fire drills, as they're planning their, planning their earthquake drills, they need to have these special additional conversations for, for students that need those conversations.
David, since we're already talking about this, I have a couple of questions. One is directly related, this is several times I've heard that we basically have been advising staff to leave children behind, which scares me. And so I want to just directly ask the question, is that our plan, that we leave students with special needs behind in the event of a drill or an emergency?
No, and that would be, I'd love Greg to be able to talk to that question because there's, it's a part of the the overall plan that it was in there. It wasn't to leave them in, in a, in a building to, but it was, if there was a, a emergency situation where first responders would know to, to be able to respond to the students.
So we have a plan in place to evacuate all students?
Yeah, and so, yeah, and, and we have, we have now the, the emergency back chairs. And, and we purchased those, we got those last year, and they've.
And that, this goes, I think, along to Heather's point, is teaching and going through those drills. So for example, I was able to be out at Malphi last year during a drill. And one student was not, he did not yet have the skill to be able to get out fast enough, get through the woodchips fast enough. A parent had to, you know, try to carry him, and it wasn't safe for her or the student. So we were able to identify a need there, that that student needed specialized stroller for emergencies, emergencies only, and then practice it. And the, the PT there was able to find one that the family agreed on. So that's why we practice, that's why we are having the conversations around these additional needs. Because one student's need might be very different than the other student's need.
And every building is unique as well. I, so with that, I, I'm curious, is you mentioned that it's, it's going to be rolled out soon. What is the estimated timeline that you have? Because I, I know that we do emergency drills in each semester, and there's part of state requirements for that. Do we have an estimated timeline that this can be rolled out in time so that building administrators can make adjustments for their unique buildings and those needs?
It is essentially done and ready, and it's just getting the final go-ahead.
My second question has to circle back to the safety net that you were talking about in 2017 and 2018. Jesse, if you can go back to that slide for me, that has the numbers from 2017 all the way through 2022. There we go. Ninety-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars, we were able to recoup back. And now it looks like we have in that over eight hundred thousand dollars. That's a nine X increase, which is great, that we have this reserve. What, and obviously we had to use some of that money recently. What are we using that for? We have almost a million dollars in the bank for sped things. Is this a staff thing, a supply thing? What is this?
Well, some of this, and a large proportion of that eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand is for our students who are in, some of our students need an out-of-district placement. And so, so a lot of those students are students that were essentially a safety net. Anything over thirty-five thousand dollars per student, you can put in to get that reimbursement above. And that's all districts in, in the state of Washington, you know, virtually all of them are accessing those funds. It's also for students, when we have a student who has a need for a one-on-one support in a district, then the additional cost of that one-on-one parent educator, as well as the classroom teacher, speech therapist, all the service providers goes into estimating that cost. We have, and, and this, this year was a little bit larger than other years. And one of those reasons was we, we had a student who during COVID ended up needing a, a residential placement, which is a very high-cost cert program. And so we actually, initially that award was over nine hundred thousand dollars. But luckily, you know, working with the student and their family, student was able to return to the school district during the summer. So we weren't needing to have that student placed over in the residential placement, since now back at Monroe High School, participating.
Thank you.
And then just one, one final thing with the Emergency Management Plan. Soon as that's finalized, we'll make sure we get that so that you can see it. It's, and that's a lot of Joy's hard work. She really pulled a lot of this together, so she gets the lion's share of the credit for this one. Last thing, and I'll go briefly so that we're not here all night. Just two quick areas of focus, you know, for our current school year. One would be around just continuing to support and, and our building of inclusive practices. We've did, done a lot of work in getting our students into general education classrooms. We want to make sure that when they're, when they're in those general education classrooms, that they're benefiting to the greatest extent possible. So making sure that those supports from the general education teachers as well as the special education teachers, that we're still delivering all the needed IP services. And then the final thing that, that we're gonna do, and this is part of our district-wide focus around supporting our students, our multi-language learners, is we want to work to reduce the disproportionate identification of students for special education, who are also second language learners. Go to the last slide there. And, and this here is the data, and this is where I would hope you would hold me accountable next September. Because this is an area of focus for us. So when you look at that, the top line there, and we shared this, this slide with our special education staff as well. So they are aware of the data and that we're working with data to improve those numbers. When you look at our district percentages, our district special education identification rate is thirteen point seven percent. Our district MLL rate is about twelve percent. Students that are MLL and identified as having a special education need is at eighteen percent. So we know that students with language differences, language differences are not a disability. It's, it's a gift. And so when we see that we have eighteen percent of our students that are MLL or also identified for special education, and we know our district identification is thirteen point seven, we know we're identifying more students with, with, with language issues than what, what it should be at. And so some of that is, is gonna be working with our special education teams as far as things that they're looking at when they're identifying, you know, evaluating students for, that are also MLL. But it's also, you know, some of the work that Chris Cronus and Kim Whitworth are doing around building our tier-one and tier-two supports to make sure that our, our students are receiving more services and more intervention services before they're being referred for special education. A lot of times, students with language learning differences are being referred not because the teachers want them into a special education program. It's because they didn't know, it was like special education was the only game in town as far as what, what supports they can get. So as we, in our district, as we build out those supports and those MLL strategies in the classrooms, that part of that rate is gonna go, go down naturally because of students. That part of that rate is gonna go down naturally because the students are gonna be receiving the there's those services and supports. Within their general education environment. But that is, I I do plan on bringing this slide back next next September and I'll. I'll pay the price if it's worth, but 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 I'm confident in our teams that that we're moving in the right direction here. And and that is our presentation. Any other questions?
I've got a couple for you. So first, when we're talking about the safety planning. I heard both of you talk a bit about teams and and just from my understanding. Parents are involved in those teams. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And we did, last year, we did one evening webinar where we. You know, kind of talk with 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 our parents as far as, you know, getting their input. Also had a questionnaire, you know, a feedback document that they were able to to provide additional input to. When we finished, kind of when we had our draft a draft of this plan in. It was either late May or June, we had another feedback. Session where we shared with some of those folks that had had given input previously, they were able to come back and then. It was. At at to our meeting where we had some special education teachers join, we had some parents. Like Joy said, we had a representative from the ARC, Snohomish County ARC was giving feedback. So really trying to get that broad-based. Input. This is, and this is a beginning spot, so I'm sure, you know, with any plan, we're gonna, as we roll it out, we will. Continue to evaluate it and make changes. But we have a good, solid foundation now that we're able to build, we should be able to build off of that.
Okay, so I I'm, I guess, asking about something a little bit more targeted. So if there is a student. Who has a specialized plan for emergency situations, I I'm trying to confirm that. The parents of that student would have access to that plan and would have to agree to that plan, which I think. It with the malt B example, you sort of set the the parents had agreed to that. But I just want to make sure that that's something that families have access to.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And and I should also say. When we're building this plan out, we're not just looking at for students with identified learning disabilities because, and it came up, you know, in some of our. Our sessions also, there's the invisible displays that may not be identified. They may not be have an IP or a section five or four plan, but we have students with. Anxiety and another undiagnosed, you know. You know, learning differences that we that our teams need to be planning for.
That's awesome. I really appreciate that. I think that's really important work. Two questions that I had from just looking through the slides on slide number eight. I was curious why there aren't any numbers for leaders leaders in learning or Sky Valley Education Center.
That would be because. The the numbers of of students at Leaders Learning is is so small that it's 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 quite a bit skewed. And then for Sky Valley. Those numbers, it's almost disproportionately low with the special education identification rates. And a lot of that is because it's a choice program. A lot of our families who are accessing. Sky Valley. Choose to be doing all those services themselves, so the identification rate is 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 much lower. It's disproportionately low. To our population. That is an area. When I first came into the district eight years ago, I believe their percentage was zero percent, that no students had had IPs. And Karen and Pex are great partners, and so we've been. I know students are are being referred, they are being identified and serve serve for IPs as well. And and I could and and I didn't include that. Some of those slides were slides that I used in our in our back-to-school on presentation. And I didn't want to give an unrealistic portrayal. I I can I can get to those numbers if you.
No, I appreciate it. I I appreciate the explanation. And then my last comment is just, and especially because you're gonna be bringing it back. That special education and M M L data, I had a hard time deciphering this graph. I, for me, there are, I I have trouble determining if I am, I'm looking at percentages of our overall district. And then I'm looking at a percentage of a percentage. And so I think I would just ask either for like the calculations or the actual numbers, some way for me, it was hard to read.
Yeah, I could do that. And actually, that was the one piece today, as I was I was thinking about how I was gonna present that, because it gets a little bit convoluted. I think I think the message is we're over identifying.
Yes, awesome. Okay, so emergency drills have already occurred at most of the high schools, at most of the schools in our district. I'm assuming because that's the norm for the beginning of the school year. In an effort to increase emergency preparedness. Is it a possibility to create an opportunity for the teachers and parents of these students to. Create these specialized individual emergency plans the moment that we have this out?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And and you're and you're absolutely right on. There's there's typically one drill every year, every, not every year, every month. It's a different identified drill. And so we're we're into September, so so we missed one.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, David and Joy. Appreciate you both. Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item five point zero one, proposal for superintendent search. Is there a motion?
Not quite sure. I move the Monroe School District Board of Directors reviews proposals for superintendent search and approves. The approves one associate for.
Second. Yeah. Which one? And then we can discuss it.
Is there a motion? I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the H Y A proposal for superintendent search.
Second.
There is a motion at a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve superintendent search process. From H Y A. Discussion.
Sarah, you opened it up. Do you wanna? Discuss why you did your motion for that one?
I personally, I think, had a good experience with H Y A in our interim search. I felt like they did a great job. In terms of looking at the costs, it it seemed appropriate to me.
I I sent an email out this weekend because as we're going over our board docs to prepare for the meeting. I noticed that H Y A had given us their their bid for the proposal or estimated cost of the fees. And then they gave us other fees of options that we wanted to kind of it with like a. A la carte of if we want these different things, then those would be the costs associated with that. Also appreciate that they had mentioned in the past, working with us, that there would be a discount for continuation of of services with them, and they included that in there. I was disappointed that Northwest Leadership Associates did not have any bids in there. I felt like. If we're looking at making a decision, that was kind of difficult. Obviously, I looked into the fact that they have a very long history of superintendent searches that they posted in there that are still there. But for me, I I really felt like if we continue also working with. The same representatives from H Y A, I was extremely satisfied with how thorough they were and doing a lot of background checks. And so I felt. Very comfortable continuing, working with. Just as we contract with other services, continuing with good experiences, I think that's a good thing. And this is another example of that. This is an important decision. So for me. They came to the table more prepared as well, and they were extremely prepared in the past, working with them as we were looking for our interim superintendent.
I'd have to say as well that watching the process through some of the Facebook groups in Duval and just seeing how. The Riverview School District went through this process with H Y A and everything that they did to involve the community. And have those meet and greets, those reach outs, you know, continual surveys. There was a lot of really good feedback from people in the community that they really felt involved in the process. And everything about that to me was fabulous, not to mention just what you guys have already said, basically. That we had a really great experience with them. They were incredibly thorough and they found us really good candidate. So I am, I am really confident and I think what they'll be able to provide us, and because we already have that rapport going forward. They already have gotten a chance to know us and kind of what our needs are. To hear from the community and all that, I feel like they are going to be the best equipped, you know, to be able to. Deliver what it is that we need essentially.
I echo the other comments. I was impressed by their effectiveness and presenting the information and putting information together for us to make decisions. They were ahead of our. Questions, being unfamiliar with the search process, they they led us through, they were never. Trying to influence which way we went. They just provided us information to make decisions. It was very much appreciated. To give you an example, we they submitted seventy-five questions for the board to consider for. Questions of those we had to choose thirteen. And they were in different categories of leadership, community. And such, so we submitted our top choices. And then we had a meeting that boiled those down and we had a chance, they walked us through. To. Gain agreement, what we should ask and how we should go about it. And that's very effective. I mean, we got it done within one meeting. And. They were just on task with their their work. I really appreciated it.
Any other questions, discussion? I echo what everyone here said. I'm I'm most excited to watch H Y A. Or I I'm most excited just to see them engage with our community. I think that they did an awesome job and they gauged our. Community pretty well and kind of have a grasp for it and already developed relationships here. And. So I I just excited to for them to kind of take off and see them work with our our families. Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Okay, and we have business item five point zero two C T E, end of year compliance reports slash four-year planning. And we have Ms. Shannon. Who will present the C T E end of year compliance report.
So actually, I am here to ask approval for our four-year planning for our C T E. End of year, it's part of our C T E end of year compliance report. The piece that needs the board approval is actually the four-year planning. The rest of it is. Just reporting what happened. So. So what this is, is to receive C T E or career in tech ed. Enhanced funding for our programs that are all secondary level, it's seven through twelve. We have to do the O S P I requires an end-of-year compliance report just to identify how we use our funds, what dual credit options we're providing. How our staff is receiving professional development, what their certifications are and those kind of things. So. And there are several standards that are part of the four-year planning document. Could you pull that up? So this is the four-year planning document that was in your your documents there. And within that, so you see education educator licensing, curriculum and instruction evaluation. I'm not gonna go through and read them all to you, but they're they're in the document. Those are all the the. Standards that C T E is asked to meet every single year. So as part of our funding, we have to identify. Not we have to complete this report, but we also have to identify what we plan to do with that funding in the future. So. What you see up on the screen there is the first three columns of from twenty-one. To twenty twenty-four are all ones that have previously been submitted and approved by O S P I. That last column, the twenty-four, twenty-five is our our future planning. And there's been a few slight tweaks in the other ones, so. And how that data or information is collected is in a variety of ways. So. One of the C T E requirements is that for any, all of our programs, we have to have both a program advisory committee and a general advisory committee. G A C or P A C or the acronym, C T loves acronym, sorry. So what those committees are made up of is our C T E staff and support staff as well as community. And industry partners that are local. And then we use our labor market data that is produced statewide. To identify what our our upcoming needs are. And then our industry partners help inform us to identify what programs we need to continue to develop. And how we can better meet the standards that are provided there, as well as how to use that enhanced funding to develop, further develop and. Grow our program. So you'll in each of those standard areas. So you'll see there in that twenty-four, twenty-five kind of what those plans are. Are each program area in C T, there's six of them. So family consumer sciences, health sciences, business and marketing. Agriculture sciences, STEM and skilled and technical sciences, I always have to count, sorry. All of them have a program advisory committee and they meet each year to come up with a program evaluation, which was contained within the materials. And that is what drives that planning process. So what you see there is very encapsulated views of what the the feedback came back from those program advisory committees is. Any questions?
So I was looking through the evaluation of the different areas and I don't know that I saw a distinguished any of them there, albeit their basic profession. And. What I'm wondering is the. The growth plan in place for our four-year planning, are you aligning? Those areas to move us into the distinguished category so that we are moving in that direction? Is that part, was that intentional part of that process? That was what I was curious about.
I'm gonna give a shot at answering your question, but let me know if I don't make it. So what we've done in the last few years, so as you know, I came on board in this role last year. So. Part of what I did is actually take our program evaluation process and align it to these standards. Prior to that, it wasn't. So you'll see in a lot of cases within the program evaluations that they're not there yet because we haven't done this comparing to the actual standards and it. Maybe ever. So that's something that we started to do. A lot of our staff are having those conversations. We, last year alone, in educator licensing, we were able to go from a not meeting standard because we had several people unconditional certifications. To the majority of us on continuing or having people on plans for achieving that certification for C T because it's a separate certification. So that's one of the reasons why you see that that gap and disparity there. We also are kind of what we're doing within our planning is our support team is working with our teachers to go through each of these standards. With their programs and meetings several times during the year to see if we can push that ball forward. I I don't think four years is exactly where I want to get to beyond basic. So we're kind of trying to push that forward a little bit quicker with our staff. And our staff is very much on board. I would say that they're a big part of driving the the process forward and moving in that direction. We haven't had a C T E person with oversight of this, just C T in a really long time in Monroe, and so they're very thankful for that. And that's helping change that. So yes, it's informing this, but also I think it's gonna be moving a lot faster. But that's also the first time they've used the form.
Is there a motion?
You got, you have questions? You got, I've got a couple of questions.
I was wondering. So it's Perkins Grant. So I was thinking, this is a endowment or is it from a foundation or is it just? It just struck my curiosity.
So the end of year compliance report is not part of the Perkins Grant. It's just required for C T E programs regardless whether or not they receive that grant. The Perkins, my speaking. The Perkins Grant is a separate, it's a it's a fiscal grant that you can apply for to receive funding. We do generally apply for it in Monroe School District. It usually totals roughly about twenty-eight thousand dollars. So it's a. In the overall scheme of C T E funding is a pretty small portion. We usually use that to enhance our professional development opportunities for staff. Because part of C T E is that we are very much trying to keep our staff up to speed on what's happening in. very much trying to keep our staff up to speed on what's happening in industry. And so it's really important that they have that professional development opportunity in order to do that. So it's an outside funding source. It's a whole separate thing. I'll presenting that next month.
I do remember that from about a year ago, now that you mentioned it. With years ago, I was on a DECA advisory committee. And this, I was just wondering, can you tell me a little bit about the committee? You said you had teachers and business professionals. When you have a meeting, are they making recommendations or are they kind of, are they holding you guys accountable in terms of where you're at and where you're going?
A little bit of all of that. So the, the general advisory committee is made up of all of our staff from all of the different program areas and industry partners. So, and some of them have been longstanding. They are not necessarily members of our program advisories. So they, some of them are and some of them aren't. And we, this four-year plan, for instance, has to be approved by that board also. So that, those type of things are going to that and they're giving approval and input on all of these processes. The program advisory committees are also made up of local folks and like, and like I said, each program. So business and marketing would be the DECA appropriate one. And they do have industry partners that are helping to guide that work and giving feedback. There's less kind of voting and more specific kind of accountability protocols within the program advisory committee, but it still is there. The, the bigger power, I guess, would be located within the general advisory committee. I will also say that, like, pretty much universally during COVID, this process kind of suffered. So because traditionally, those meetings are all happening in person. They had to move online. And it's really hard to go through and like analyze facilities, which is one of the standards up there when you can't be in the facility and some of those different pieces. So and then we had several of our industry partners or community members drop off during that. So part of what my team is working hard on this fall is trying to recruit and get new members on board and kind of reboot the process, especially the program advisory. We kept our general advisory going pretty strongly, but program advisory really suffered.
I have two pages of notes. Shannon, you know that, and I won't go through all that tonight, but
Okay, I'm ready.
You know that this is the stuff I'm passionate about too, that, you know, you're speaking my language here. One of the top thing on my notes is similar to, to what Director Whitfield brought up. I would really like to know who's on what committees. I, if we could have a list of who those folks are and where they hail from, I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely not a problem.
And that was something in, in going over all of the different evaluations, there were several times, you know, in ag their goal, one of their goals was three meetings with more than two members. So it, it sounded to me, I mean, it did, it seemed sort of thematic that, that more people need to be involved. One of the things that come, coming up for me is this is something where we're looking at internship or externship opportunities. I saw quite a bit from Everett Community College. We also have Edmunds Community College that has allied health and also family, family and youth support services. When I was there, I helped put together several employer panels that allowed students to meet with employers and talk to them about internships. And then all of those programs required internships in order to get the degree. So I think that they could provide some really good industry partnership. And then I will, I will, I'll save the rest of it for another day, but I have to give a shout out. I did wear my sports medicine shirt from the fun run last year to celebrate our CTE students and staff and faculty and all of the good work that they do. So I'm, as a vocational counselor, I'm, I'm excited that we are supporting students in, in their pathways and in finding great careers. So it's really cool.
Thank you. And I'd actually like to, if I can, address the, the internship externship piece. So one of the things that also suffered during COVID, no surprise, our post-secondary partners and some of those partnerships really declined just because of staffing and turnover. So we've been working very hard to rebuild that. Last year, we hired somebody specifically within our program as a support person to help with that piece and is actually attending some upcoming trainings with Everett Community College. We traditionally go through Everett Community College because that's been on our agreements for those dual credit pieces. We're working really hard at trying to get some other agreements in place with other schools. Last year, we did get a one through Bellevue College, but it, you wouldn't see it in our end of year compliance report because it, it's for this year. So you'll see that next year. So we do, we are working on expanding those opportunities actively. And I would love to talk more about it because this is my love language and you always give me lots of insight on how I can improve it. So thank you so much.
Is there a motion?
I moved the Monroe School District Board of Directors' approved CTE end of year compliance report slash for your planning.
Is there a second? Second. There's a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the CTE end of year compliance report slash for your planning. All in favor? The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item five point zero three, consideration of director district boundaries, stage three, and it's the resolution. Is there a motion?
Move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the proposed director district boundaries.
A second? Second. There's a motion in a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the proposed director district boundaries discussion. All in favor? The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item five point zero four, new student representative. Okay, so we have, look. Do I, do you want me to just pass it over to you? Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve Laura Wittenberg as our new student representative to the Board of Directors for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion in a second that the Board of Directors of the Monroe School District approve the appointment of Laura Wittenberg as a student representative to the Board of Directors. Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, the agenda item has passed five to zero. Welcome. All right. We've got agenda item six point zero one, oath of office. We've got interim superintendent, Dr. Marcy Larson. The oath of office will be administered by Dr. Larson to our current student representative Nathan Burrell and our new student representative Laura Wittenberg.
Okay, so I'll have you face the audience and Laura, I'm going to have you come on this side, but come closer to me. Okay, can your parents see you back there? Okay, I want to make sure that you're right in front of the camera there. Okay, I would like for you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and then state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington and will faithfully perform the duties of student representative of Monroe School District number one oh three in the county of Snohomish, State of Washington. According to the best of my ability. I think we need a picture, don't we? Did you already get some pictures? You know what we should do? We, after the meeting, we should get a picture with the students and the rest of the board. Does that sound good? All right, you can take your seat at the head table there next to Nathan.
Okay, welcome to the table, Laura. All right, we have superintendent consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'm already on. I moved that the Board of Directors from Monroe School District approves the as Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the superintendent consents agenda.
Is there a second? Second. There is a motion in a second that Monroe School District Board of Directors accept and approve all items listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to board consent agenda, is there a motion?
I mean, Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated September twenty-six, twenty-two.
Is there a second? Second, there's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated September twenty-seven, twenty-one. All in favor, raise your hand.
Point of order. There's just, it says in there, September twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one. I think that's a typo that it's September twenty-six, twenty-two. Because that's what you said. Is that correct?
That's what I said.
Okay, just making sure. Yeah. Just make sure.
So we will go ahead and update that. Perfect. Okay, all in favor with the revision, raise your hand. Thank you, Director Campbell. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item nine point zero one, board reports, comments and suggestions. If anyone like.
My mic's still on. Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Go Bearcats! Oh my goodness! Monroe football, I went to my first game, saw Nathan there. That was awesome. The band was phenomenal. I'm sorry, I felt bad for the other team, but seventy to twenty at halftime? And it's like a whole thing. I was, I'm, I'm sad about the Seahawks. My Cougs lost this weekend. I found a team to fall in love with that maybe we have, maybe we have a chance. And I was just, just super excited, not just our team. Our team played great. They're awesome. But to see the community turnout, it was a sea of orange and black. And I just thought this was just so great to see that. And our daughter got to participate. The cheer squad did a clinic as a fundraiser with, with elementary and middle school girls to be a part of that. And that was super awesome. And our daughter got to participate, but just the community involvement there. And to see families just super excited to support their kids in, in all of that. And I think it just, to echo Nathan's comment about the, the feel at the, at the beginning of the school year, what we felt in our last meeting with staff presenting just that, that enthusiasm, it just was a great continuation of all of that. So sorry if I scared anybody about the Go Bearcats, but man, that was my first football game here and it was just, it was awesome. I, I, I did feel bad for the team a little bit later, but just, it was really exciting to see our community get out and support our students and the seniors. The, the band seniors as well and the, the representation of them was super exciting. And so just for me, I'm excited. I'm excited to start getting out into classrooms as well this fall. So that's what I just had to say.
Anyone else? Director Johnson?
Yeah, I'll go. So one training to share, I went to a Washington family engagement partnered with Washington Leadership Network Legislative Advocacy Network Training. And it was really just a basic review of legislature in Washington State, how it works, how to get a bill started. It was great. It was a free training. And they encouraged folks who are interested in watching legislation that has to do with our public schools to watch the House, House Children, Youth and Families Committee and the Senate Early Learning and K through twelve education. They also recommended watching the Children's Alliance of Washington. And we were able to submit requests for future trainings. And so I asked for future training about advocacy work with school board directors. I thought that'd be kind of a cool, cool thing for the community to get to know more about is how, how they can work with us to promote legislation that supports our schools and students. And then the second thing that I'm excited to talk about, so as the WIAA rep, I received an invitation to send in nominations for WIAA and the US Army are partnering for Salute to Coaches. National Coaches Day is on October sixth. And so I had the privilege of submitting five nominations for five of our amazing coaches in Monroe School District. And since we won't be back here before October sixth, I thought I'd go ahead and share the little blurbs that I wrote about each, each coach. So Ashley Chuyasosopo is the head coach for Monroe High School's fast pitch softball team in the spring and serves as athletic director year round. Coach Chuy is in her ninth year of service in Monroe School District and has focused on developing personal courage of students and athletes alike by helping them perceive what they love, encouraging them to try new things and guiding them to build connections on teams and within the community. Go Bearcoats. Go Bearcats, excuse me. Next is Justin Proon, the head's boys basketball coach at Monroe High School. He demonstrates loyalty and commitment to athletes and the community by supporting all students and running a summer hoop camp. Coach Proon was named Monroe School District's Coach of the Month in January twenty-twenty-two. He models respect and makes an effort to root everyone on. Brittany Kits is a physical education teacher and coaches, coaches girls wrestling and track and field for Monroe High School. Under Coach Kits' leadership, five student athletes competed in the WIAA state track meet last spring. She honors her students by supporting their goals, boosting confidence and helping them prepare for successful college careers in life. Thank you, Coach Kits. Joel Garrison is the athletics director for middle school sports and assistant principal of Park Place Middle School. Throughout her thirty-five year career with Monroe School District, Coach Garrison has exemplified loyalty to students and dutiful commitment to education. Thank you, Coach Garrison, and go Hawks and go Pumas. Mike Dale coaches girls softball at Park Place Middle School in the Monroe School District. In the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year, he's marking his forty-ninth year of coaching and demonstrates selfless service and loyalty to student athletes. He volunteers at nearly every football game. Thank you, Coach Dale. Hope we have a lot of great, great coaches here, great programs. And just as a, a point of information, all of those coaches and our athletics and activities are funded by levy dollars. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Sarah. I especially have to echo Coach Kits. I was on track and field with her at SPU and I know her very well. She graduated the same year that I did and she is absolutely phenomenal. We are very lucky to have her for a PE teacher and also for a coach. So a couple of things. I was able to attend our mental health fair that happened here in Monroe, the first annual mental health fair. Big shout out to David Perator for being there and running our school booth. That was fabulous. I got the opportunity to run the carnival booth and interact with all the little kids that came by. And I absolutely loved it. I think their favorite was the fling a frog. Good to send a little rubberized frog flying and try to get it into the lily pad. So it was an amazing day. It was amazing to see the break dancers come and perform. And just for everybody to rally together and around mental health in our community and provide so many resources to everyone that came. There were a lot of people that came. Thank you, Director Whitfield, for coming as well. I appreciate that. The other thing that I had the opportunity to do is I took my children up with the VFW, I'm able to clean the veterans headstones, which I absolutely love to do. And as we do it, we say the name of the veteran and thank them for their service. It's a way to always remember them, the sacrifices that they gave, and they'll never be forgotten. As a daughter of a veteran and a sister of a veteran, this is something that's near and dear to me. I also had the opportunity to meet two of our JROTC cadets, Josh and Alex. Two phenomenal young men that go to Monroe High School, had some great conversations with them. I encourage them to come and speak at one of our board meetings and let us know what it is that they do. I don't know in the entire time that we've had this, if we've ever had a presentation on our JROTC program. I think we need to be able to hear from the people who run it, Captain Will Lennon. Especially, I think we need to know what's going on with that. If we hear from the Boys and Girls Club and we hear from the YMCA, why are we not being updated on what's happening with our JROTC program? So if we could get that on the docket at some point on the agenda, that would be greatly appreciated. I know that they would love to come and present to us because they're very proud of what they do. So another thing, a big thank you for making this happen. I walked into Sky Valley today. First day officially back on campus. I was on vacation with my family last week. But first thing I noticed, new paint on the doors and boy, But first thing I noticed, new paint on the doors and boy, does it make a huge difference. It looks absolutely lovely. It's a small facelift that has occurred. And I have to say, I'm very excited about the new paint for the trim as well. I'm excited to see how that looks and just how it makes Sky Valley an even more inviting place. So thank you again for making that happen. It means a lot to us at Sky Valley. The other thing, going back to campus today, it was amazing to see all of the kids and all of the teachers. I had the opportunity to meet some new families, some new friendly faces who were there, meet some new kids who were there. And it's always just filled with excitement and love and community. And you just unite around this common goal of educating children. It's a beautiful thing to see. So I had a lot of fun. It was also picture day. So waiting in line with my kids was a, was a fun endeavor, but we had a really good day and it was awesome. And I also have to say that I am super excited to see Laura here as a representative also of Sky Valley. I think it's important that we hear voices from multiple schools within this district. And I loved having Nathan here last year to be able to present that to us. So I'm very excited to moving forward to continue to have that ability for Sky Valley as the second biggest school in our district, to continue to have that voice and to have a seat at this table. And I think Laura is going to do a fantastic job representing that for us as well as other voices within this district as she carries out this role. So I'm very excited to see you in that seat. Yeah, I think that is all I have for this year. I'm just super excited rolling into October to see all of the things that are happening, to start attending some of those sporting events. I'd love to make it out to a varsity volleyball game because that was my jam in high school. So yeah, I look forward to seeing members of the community at these events as I start branching out and getting into classrooms this fall as well. Definitely looking forward to that.
Okay, oh, go ahead Chuck. Sorry, Director Whitfield.
President Bumpus. Dr. Larson. Brenda. And I went to the city council for a levy, levy presentation. Dr. Larson gave some nice comments about the, the successes the school district has. Brenda, joining as ever, being able to communicate a very complicated subject. It was well received. Melanie Lockhart gave good comments via Zoom and Robin Hayashi also gave good comments in person. So that was success, sex, a success. Do you know the city council meets once a week, every Monday? My gosh, what a killer. I also enjoyed going to the mental health fair. I say, I saw David there as a professional. You were underneath a nice shaded tree. You know what you're doing. It was well done. It was really good to see the event as a community event instead of the stigma of a, a mental health fair. So there was a lot of fun things to do, a lot of booths. Met some incredible people with the services they provide. And so that was, that was good. It was very good. We also had another meeting at City Hall with the mayor of Monroe and Snohomish and a representative from Snohomish County and President Bumpus and Dr. Larson talked about common messaging that the school districts can have in cities where we can collectively have a language that we can work towards addressing inequities and having something positive to be able to message. Now that the oldest living school board member is, is doing okay at his, his home care. And I have adequate staffing at the office. I'm going to get back into the legislative side. Going to the General Assembly, Assembly for WASTA on Friday and Saturday and review bylaws, their legislative positions and some resolutions. Let me tell you about cows. I have a golden retriever. That's more than a handful right now.
I think it's because you told us about pigs last time, right? Okay, I just want to make sure everyone got the reference there. Okay. Okay, well, yeah, Chuck, Marcy and I spent, Dr. Larson and I spent a lot of time together last week. Got to meet a lot of people and share our enthusiasm and energy for the Monroe School District and all of the clubs and athletics and all of the things that we do really well here and just wanting to continue to do them really well here. I was going to read the proclamation that we have for the city of Monroe that Mayor Thomas put together. It's about Hispanic Heritage Month. So it is, it's, it's lengthy and we've been here for a little bit, but I will reference it a little bit. 19% of Monroe's residents are, identify as Hispanic or Latino. And, and that's whose ancestors have lived in the Americas, including lands within today's United States for over 500 years. It starts September 15th and marks the independence of Costa Rica, Nicaragua, El Salvador, Honduras, and Guatemala. I have to say them like that. It just sounds way fancier. And it is followed by Mexico's Independence Day on September 16th. It was originally a week long and then was expanded in 1998, in 1988 to be a full 30 days. It's really neat for, I have a big, I have three kids. One of them really loves to read, really thankful. It's Jada Girl. And she brings home all of the library books that they have available at the Freyland Library. And we get to go through them and it's really great practice for our Spanish as well. My oldest is doing Duolingo to learn more Spanish. He knows how to ask for an apple right now. So, so if he comes up to you and asks for an apple, just know, we've been working on it. And so it's, it's just really neat to be able to celebrate some of that and learn it and within our own home as well. A couple of other things, I was able to attend Monroe Equity Council's cultural celebration event here that they had in Monroe. That was really awesome. It was over at the park behind the Boys and Girls Club. I always forget the name, but it's behind the Boys and Girls Club, Sky River. I've lived here for over 20 years. And that was really awesome. They had the mariachi, they had dancers, they had rappers, they had a DJ. It was so, so fun. My parents went, Dr. or Director Johnson and I were there. I left my kids home so that I could have fun. I'm just kidding. It was smoky out. And I wanted to check in with my, with other directors. So I start school next week and just hoping that we can maybe change the time. I don't, it's at UW. It hurts my whole heart. I know, I know. It hurts my heart. Go Cougs still. But I know, I'm going to wear Coug gear every day. But I am hoping that we can maybe change the time a little bit for our next school board meeting. So I just wanted to let you all know and see how that sits to maybe like just an hour ahead because of a three-hour class following the school board meetings. Yeah, so after, so if I can, yeah, we could start at like 5:00 PM. If we have a board workshop, it'd be like a 4:00 PM start. You can drop them off with Mr. Bumpus. They might come back to you playing football. So just if, if that's, okay, awesome. Yep, just wanted to let you guys all know that. And thank you. I did check with Professor. She's strict. And that's about it. Never stop learning, right? That's, that's pretty good. Never stop learning. Almost 38, three kids going back to school. Go Cougs. All right. It is 7:37 PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.